Okay, it is Wednesday, March 13th, 2019. Let's call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Menace reports received and filed.
I have February 2019, our county try to reconcile your file. February 2019 sheriff's file.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Sol waste management district board meeting this afternoon. Home Builders Association meeting this evening. Cole County Chiefs Thursday night. Healthy Communities Executive Meeting Friday morning, 9:00 AM. MSP CP meeting 9:30 Friday. Jefferson City Downtown Rotary Chicken Fish Dinner, is that the Eagles? Friday. Towse Fish Fry Friday. St. Thomas Fish Fry Friday. Larry Oak's Football Dinner Saturday. I'm gonna bring that resolution out there and present that Saturday if you all want to come out. I think you said you had something going Saturday though.
I have the American Legion 100th Anniversary. I get to present a proclamation and speak with Kerry.
All right.
I'd rather come to yours.
This is recorded, you know.
I know.
Then there's barbecue out at Emmanuel Lutheran out off Tannan Bridge Sunday.
Honey Creek.
Yeah, Honey Creek. So, so much for the diet. We're eating good this weekend.
You gonna go to all those fish fries?
No, I'm gonna hit St. Thomas's, I think. Yeah. Towse will have another one later on. I'll make it to theirs.
I don't have anything else.
Tonight, there's the salute veterans airshow meeting at 7:00. Tomorrow at 8:30, we've got a Cole County Day at Springfield Cardinals meeting. Yeah, Friday, I've got the MSP meeting. Cap Region Board Retreats Friday and Saturday. And then Saturday night, I go to the American Legion 100th Birthday. Sunday, I have the wrong date. Sunday is the Historic City of Jefferson's Annual Dinner. And then Monday at 3:00, we have a bicentennial meeting here in the chambers if you guys want to come. And that's it. I think that's about every day. Commission comments? Bids and contracts? amend 2019-09 Glassbeads Bid Award.
We awarded Glassbeads two weeks ago, and then it was brought to our attention that one of the bids was accidentally not tabbed. The copy of it was sent to Public Works, so I didn't have it. Anyway, they happen to be the low bid, so we would like to amend the bid to Swarco Reflex for $24,480.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
In what way?
The bid was sent to Public Works?
Whenever we get bids, we get one original and two copies. The clerk's office gets the original, and then I retain a copy and then send a copy to the bidding department. So, my copy and Public Works' copy was accidentally put, you know, sent to their office, and then it wasn't, I didn't get it to them until after the award. So, both copies were included with theirs, and so when I was doing the bid tabulation, it was not considered.
So, the bid was received here in time?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
I just didn't get the, or you didn't have a, you didn't have a copy of Swarco?
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I move that we award Glassbeads to Swarco Reflex LLC.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Works Cooperative Procurement Purchase Approval Tractors With Boom Mowers.
I did go through RTI, and there's a multi-award tractor on that. I did go through Henderson Implement also, and they, they are not allowed on MoDOT contracts to actually come into this counting bid because they have territories. But it is a multi-tractor award on there for that price. I did go on MoDOT's actual site and look up this price on this tractor, and this is like about $2,000 under what their actual price is on their MoDOT contract price, so I do think he's actually giving us a good price on it.
So, we're buying two. This is a total price for one is $148.715.
At this time, we are looking at buying two. As you know, everything just seems to be going up this year. We also have a price that I'm working on to replace a tandem dump truck. If it comes in higher than what I originally thought, we might just buy one. But for now, yes, we're trying to buy two.
Okay. So, is this price for two, or is this price for one?
This is a price that he gave me to purchase these. Now, if, I don't, I think if I go back to him, I don't think you'll have a problem with him just doing one. If he does, I'll have to do something else with it, but right now, I'm trying to play with budget money, and you all, as you know, that have to stay in that amount of money, and stuff has come in higher than what I originally thought it would anyway.
What we need today, Jen, on this, just approval of, just the award of both of these, or?
Approval of up to two, and I'd say one if you're definitely getting one.
Yes.
And then, yeah, we'll just issue a PO or whatever.
Since they're both on MoDOT and Southwell contracts, um...
It's cooperative, so we can purchase them any time.
It's cooperative person, right.
As long as they have the approval to do so from you.
Yeah.
So, I move that we approve up to two new boom mowers based on this sheet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Signing of the 2019-2020 Idemia Live Scan Maintenance Contract.
Guys flipping a quarter.
So, this is a contract renewal for our live scan. Obviously, we need somebody to sign here. It's for two live scan machines and a printer.
This is like a continued maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's good. It's $4,767.
Absolutely. I love maintenance.
Yeah, I know, we all do.
I can't even get the file opened, but you got that?
Yeah, you want to see it?
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna change anything. It's just, I'm good with it. I was just trying to look at it.
I move that we sign the Idemia Live Scan Maintenance Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to ask him questions or anything, or just make him sweat it out, or?
Make us realize how dumb we are about live scan machines?
Do we have any unfinished business? Are you unfinished business for your account? Okay. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
Ask you to approve accounts payable?
I have one in there, so.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Two.
Budget Adjustment Number Two is $5,000 received from the LAPC for flow study for Bill Barr. This is the first reading, so it'll be held over for two days.
Say that was a flow study? Flow for what?
Aggregates material.
Next.
Waiting on you, buddy.
Oh. Okay. Letter of Support for Arabia Museum, and Jill has that.
There you go. I sent it to you all yesterday.
Yes.
You have any questions, or?
No.
No.
I move that we sign the Letter of Support for the Steamboat Arabia Museum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You go sign it, give it back to me, and I'll mail it.
Okay.
And then, since I have to present this resolution Friday night, Saturday night, for the American Legion, so if we could...
Resolution for...
It's not on the agenda, Sam.
It's back on Sam's day.
Yeah.
I won't pick on you, Sam. I'll leave you alone today, then.
I didn't know. It's just honoring the American Legion, honor their...
You want to look at this?
Kind of hurt they didn't invite us at all.
You want to come?
Do we just need to sign it?
Yes.
Right, mhm. Yes, good with that resolution.
Yeah, I already signed it, so.
Okay. I move that we sign a resolution for the American Legion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Change Order for 2018 Osage Overlay Program.
Yes, well, you should have a, I'm not sure if that was emailed to you or not.
I don't have a copy of it either.
Okay. Get you a copy.
He did send that to us by email, though.
I sent you an email a while back, yeah. Okay, here it is. I just have one extra copy here. This is the change order for the asphalt overlay program. It's quite a bid, and I'll explain. We, last year, we had bid hot in place recycle with City of Columbia. That came in too high. That was going to be done on Vintage Lane, South Country Club Drive, and South Country Club Spur. And so, because that came in too high, we opted not to do that, and instead just did an overlay. And the overlay on those roads was about $145,000. So, that added to this contract, plus just the overage and under, over and under on each road. Quantities come in a little over, a little under each time, and so that added for a little bit extra. And then St. Martin's bid with us this year, or last year, and theirs came in a little bit under. So, the net increase is $149,867.61 for a final contract amount of $540,406.17. So, do you have any questions, or anything?
That's good.
Okay, we just need approval of this.
Yep.
Move that we approve and sign the change order. Is this for 18 or 19?
It's 18. It's last year's.
For 2018 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. County Clerk to discuss computer maintenance agreement.
Well, I'm not asking for an extra $100,000. We're only asking for $1,300,000.
$148,000, $149,000.
So, as you guys remember, during the budget, we kind of shifted some things around and bought some computers out of sales tax for the clerk's office. In that original estimate was included some maintenance on those computers, but they got billed separately, so we just, since it came out of sales tax the first time, we'd like this to come out of sales tax as well. Total invoice, $1,335.76.
And this, I can't get this document to pull up, so this is for, what are we buying there?
It's maintenance for the computers that you already purchased for the clerk's office.
Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, we already approved it, basically, just different billing is all, so. So, do we need a vote on that today, or just?
I just need you guys to approve this invoice because it's going to come out of your budget instead of Steve's. Fuck you.
Yeah.
Is it in the accounts payable that they already approved, or?
Um, it's not in there yet, so when it goes through, it'll go through your approval departments instead of Steve's.
Okay.
So, I don't really need a vote. I just need the okay to move forward.
Okay, good.
I'll take care of it.
Run, Steve.
All right, thank you, all.
I'll take care of it, but yes.
Okay, we are going to deviate from our agenda, and we're going to go into a closed session for legal actions, and then we'll come back into open session.
Okay. I may be going to closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for Legal Action Sub 1.
Second.
Roll call. No, we're gonna come back to that. We'll do that. Stick around. Yeah, yeah.
Sam.
Yes.
Yes.
If you want to stay out.
Yes. Yeah, you can stay. Okay, so Malin versus Richardson penalties and attorney's fees payment.
So, I'll go into the...
Kind of go over what the penalties were and the attorney's fees, and then, yep.
Okay. We're gonna get on there?
Yeah, good.
Okay, um, Mike Berry is, is working with Aaron Malin's attorney on this case. This is a case where Aaron Malin and Show Me Cannabis sued Mark Richardson for not complying with the sunshine law. The trial court found that he did not, he knowingly intentionally did not, and the amount of the civil penalties was a little over $12,000, and the amount of attorney's fees was over $24,000. Now, we have additional attorney's fees because they chose to appeal it and lost on appeal. That is another, I believe it was $11,000 and something. So, our current, current amount that's owed on this case is $47,402.50. Now, on top of that, we have post judgment interest of 9%. So, currently, and this was as of yesterday, the amount owed is $51,166.55. This will continue to accumulate for every day that this is not paid.
So, it's $12 a day, basically?
$12.68 a day.
So, this was basically when Mark Richardson was prosecutor, and he failed to comply with the sunshine request.
Right. Actually, there were three of them from the same, from Aaron Malin, and he didn't, he wrote a response that was not a response.
So, we're liable for it, so...
The county is.
Yes, and that's what I mean. The county is liable for it, so.
Yeah, not you personally.
No, we, so we need to pay this as quickly as...
Mike's advice was sooner rather than later.
Yes, yeah, $12.60 some cents a day, yes. We need to pay it.
But the problem is, is that we're liable for Mark Richardson's actions. I mean, he was an idiot, and he didn't do what was required of him by law. I mean, it's to produce the records, any records that pertain to whatever the request was for. And so, you know, I mean, total negligence. I mean, just basically thought he was above the law, I guess, and didn't, didn't do what he's supposed to do, so, I mean...
Locke told me that they were able to compile the records for two out of the three requests in about an hour that took them. So, we're still working on the third one. It's more extensive. That's the one that has the Mustang communications.
Uh, this leaves a bad taste in my mouth, but we do need to pay it.
So, we currently don't have that amount in the budget. I would recommend we pay it out of general fund and move the money from contingency.
I mean, obviously, we don't control other elected officials other than their budget. I mean, how do we prevent any future action like this from happening?
Educate the voters.
Because, I mean, really, I mean, it's not just Mark, but it could be any elected official out there that's, you know, asked to produce records, and, you know, they fail to comply, and, you know, we, we end up footing the bill, so...
Well, we had the same problem several years ago with the surtax case. The county clerk's office failed to properly calculate the surtax.
Right.
And then, when that was discovered, that was a total mess, and of course, county ended up paying out a lot, financing.
Sure.
The distribution. That's the problem.
Maybe we need to get some legislation filed that holds office holders personally liable for actions of, you know...
Breaking the law?
Yeah, yeah, for breaking law.
What are we bonded for? I mean, why do we even have a bond if...
That's, that's a dishonesty bond, Jeff.
There's nothing even more dishonest than by blatantly being negligent on doing this stuff. I mean...
I don't, I don't know.
Why did he appeal it?
That beats me. I advised one of his lawyers to the appeal, and I told Todd, "You're gonna lose." I mean, I was very clear that, in my opinion, there are absolutely no grounds to appeal it, and it was just going to end up costing us more in attorney's fees.
So, did we ever see the sunshine request? We, being the clerks, the commission, anybody besides Mark?
No, it was sent to Mark.
So, then why are we paying it? Why are they gonna come to us? We didn't know anything about it. How am I getting sued over it?
Because he, he was sued in his official capacity, so the county ends up being on the hook for it.
Wouldn't that official request, shouldn't that come through the clerk's office?
That's what I was gonna say. Does that should come to the commission, or the clerk, or both?
I mean, put it this way. If, if he sends it to Mark, then Mark needs to fulfill it. You're not going to get out of responding to the sunshine request because it was sent to another elected official besides clerk. And the clerk is the custodian of records for the commission's records, like what we have in here. He's not the custodian of records for what Mark has upstairs. And I, anytime Steve does get it for another elected official, he just forwards it to them.
Elected officials should, I mean, they, they're responsible for responding to the sunshine request. When they don't, then we're, we're, okay, that is...
That's what I'm saying, though. I mean, maybe there should be some legislation passed that says, if you break the law, even though you're in your official capacity, you, you are liable personally because of that. So, I mean, there's, you know, it's no different than, you know, a circuit clerk or whatever stealing money. I mean, it's against the law, you know, and they, you know, they go back after them for stealing money. So, you know, basically, it's, Mark's stealing $51,000 from us because that's what we gotta I mean, really?
Oh, I know.
So, I mean, what's the difference? I mean, you know, just because he didn't do, do his job, costing us $51,000, it's just like somebody stealing it from you, so. I don't want to beat a dead horse forever, but what do we need to do to get this paid today, or can we do that?
So, we have an accounts payable run, so if we can get the transfer signed here in a few minutes, and you guys approve to pay it, we can get it paid with today's run, if that works for you.
I'll call Mike, too, and then tell him we're cutting the check today. Kristen?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, yeah, because if we wait, wait longer, then it's gonna compound, so, or add on. Okay.
I move that we approve the transfer and make the payment for the $51,000 and some change.
$166.55.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kristen and I need to find out from Mike who to make it out to.
I need that information pretty quickly.
I'll get it to you.
Capital purchase EMS ventilator.
Yeah, approval of capital purchase for EMS ventilators. The radio star just went outside. You, you can do it. Come on, Steve. It'd be quicker.
I guarantee it'll be less than four minutes. So, as far as the ventilators go, we've had, in the last three weeks, we've had two incidents of ventilators that we have causing issues when it comes to patient care during transport, during use of the ventilators. The ventilators that we have are fairly old and are just not meeting the needs that we have. Therefore, what we're requesting is to replace the ventilators and be putting a ventilator on each truck. The load that you have in front of you, I believe, has come down substantially from the first quote that they issued. We got a really good price. These are good ventilators. They'll do everything that we need to do, and they should last a good long time.
Cooperative purchase?
It is cooperative purchase.
This is for the Zoll ventilators?
Correct. It's for the Zoll Transport Ventilators.
Okay. We're gonna stay within our capital budget and just trying to move some things around?
Correct. We're gonna prioritize other things in capital budget lower in order to get these going.
What's the total load that will be?
I'm trying to find it here.
Yeah, this has to be done.
I did not yet. I don't even know what it was.
I think I've got it.
Had that under ventilators?
Yeah, it would've been a bid that Matt sent over.
The Zolls?
Yeah.
Yes, Zoll Ventilators.
I found it, March 8th, Friday.
So, Mike was for...
98, 945, less the trade-ins, $3,000. 95, 945.
It's less than boom trucks.
Less than what?
So, basically, this just moved up the list on the capital.
Correct.
So...
Yeah.
Did it kick off the life vest?
Hey, come on, let's have a heated discussion about that.
That was, that was for John March. Just glad to know somebody listens to us. All right, you better go.
I move that we approve the purchase of the Zoll vents. I move that we approve the purchase of these Zoll vents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Steve, man, you're much more precise and quicker than, than the radio star and...
Matt's right there, he can hear you. We just madmouth him when he's not in here, right?
Oh, okay.
I almost, I almost, no, no, never lost eye contact.
Do we have anything, anything else before? I did get an invoice from the Salute to America for $5,000, which was budgeted.
I don't know why she kept thinking she needed to send it to you, I was like, just send it to Debbie, so, anyway. She's like, I keep trying to get ahold of Sam, and, but anyway, that's what we had committed in the budget, was $5,000, right?
Yes.
For salute.
Was that underneath our economic development?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yes.
Can you give me documentation to put with that payment? Something I can document?
Oh, the salute to America?
No. Payment to the... I need something documenting what we need to pay.
Okay, I guess I'll just, I'll get it to you, because what I have...
I'm okay with that, I was looking for something else while we were talking about that.
So, this is already approved in the budget, so you just need to give this to Chelsea, and she just needs to add it as accounts payable for the next...
Going over mail that we had gotten.
We got anything else before we go into closed session, or...
I don't think so.
Okay. I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Vice Statutes of Missouri for Real Estate Sub Two.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. I don't think there'll be anything come out of that, first one.